Good evening and welcome to our Monday's Monday, February 27th, 2023, 6 o'clock. And Susan Tolly lives the board of education in 7 building.
Mr. Gayhart?
Here.
Mr. Gatton?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scaram?
Here.
Ms. Colton?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Would you have a quorum? We will continue tonight's meeting with an oldest person statue. Do you have any participation? Hearing none. Move to the office.
All right, we have the, do you have a copy of the?
I've got a copy. You want me to put it on the gallery?
Sorry.
Mr. Gatton, do you want to stand? I state your name.
I, Devin Gatton.
Who has been duly appointed to the Elkhorn Area School District Board of Education.
Who has been duly appointed to the Elkhorn Area School District Board of Education.
Swear that I would support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of set office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
All right, thank you. And will faithfully discharge the duties of set office to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
All right, I'll just turn to school and student presentation.
Hello, I am Sarah Snob. I've been at school for grades 16 and 12. And tonight we have Kristen Monday, who is our art teacher. And she is going to talk about art seminar.
Thank you. So I'm Kristen Monday, and I teach for you at CTA, at SOFOs, and then at Options. And so I've been at Options since we started, since the very, very beginning. And you know a lot of wonderful things that were happening there. So last year, Sarah came to me with an idea about doing some sort of art seminar or studio type of class for kids, the high school students that needed extra art or needed, I have an art therapy background as well. So if they needed some of that or just, you know, we were just kind of playing around with it. You know, I had this time at the end of the day and it's like, what can we do with that? So I had about four students last year and it went really well. This year I probably have almost 30, 20, it's a lot. So it like picked up like really fast. And what we do is, and I'm going to pass around some artwork of theirs. But what I do is I like to incorporate a lot of literacy and other subject matters with, with our projects. So they all have to, they kind of have their own private like art studio time. So they can, I taught them how to like create like a Pinterest board, like an account. And they, they have like just different pictures that they just shave and save and they can share with me. Ideas that they like, they just collect images and then kind of narrow it down and figure out what they want to do. They can use any art medium. So we have everything else. They can do, and I really taught them like, here's where the stuff goes. You're in charge of, you know, part of art is clean up. So they're really in charge of like their space, like they get out if they want like acrylics or oil pastels or watercolor. So I brought a couple of the things that some students have done. And then what I have them do is at the end, so they bring it to me at the end. And I just sort of go around and kind of coach them on, you know, whatever they need. They sort of just ask me as they go because every single student is doing something completely different. That was kind of happening around. But when they're done, they write, they have to write an artist statement. And so they have to title their piece, which is harder than you would think. Like they, they struggle with that a lot of times. What art medium they use, when inspired their piece, you know, were they inspired by another artist? Were they inspired by, you know, a photograph or a feeling or emotion? Or what was going on with them when they were creating this? And they just write up like a little, like here's the one that goes with that one. They just write up a little tiny little blurb. And then I hang it up, all their artwork up together. So there's just some really, I mean, they're like really, he was honestly, his, his write-up is how he was inspired by his garbage cans in the backyard. Like, I mean, you just don't know where it's going to come from, kind of. I mean, there's a lot of really, really good talent. And we even had a student last year that was kind of, some of them do a little bit with this. But we had a student last year that she had some health issues, really, really high anxiety. You know, different things that, that kids come to Options for. And she was amazing at art. And we, we really started working with kind of like art therapy. And now she's going to school at Mount Mary for art therapy. So she decided that she, yeah, she wanted to keep going with it. And I've kind of been like in touch with her like all summer and we got her book. She didn't know, like, I don't know how to apply to college. I don't know how to do any of this. So, and I graduated from Mount Mary. So, so I was like, I got you. But yeah, this is just kind of some of the neat stuff. I mean, they, they can do, again, it's just a variety, anything they want to do, any need. But it's been a really huge success. So I'm thinking we're just going to keep, keep going with it. I don't know if anyone has questions or?
I have to say, when you walk into Kristen's classroom, those students are so involved in what they are doing that there was quiet hum in that classroom. They're really just like, they're talking to each other, they're working. It's, it's a wonderful, are we using playing? It's like, yeah, it's a good vibe in there.
They get high school credit for that?
They do, they have credit a month.
You know, it's not really a question, but I mean, having a daughter that goes out, I go out there and I see like these up on the wall. You know, all the time and they do an amazing job of it.
Yeah, we have a lot of just ama, they work so hard. I mean, it's really, I, I don't like to use the word talent all the time because it's it's a lot of work. You know, it's not like they're just like, ooh, and it's all done. But they, yeah, they really work hard. And these same students have it, they kind of get double dose in art. They have an actual art time that they come for art class. And then this is an additional class. So some of them are in my room for two hours almost. And so they're getting, they're still getting like regular content and technique. And they're regular in class and then this is just a chance for them just to have that autonomy. I mean, you know what high school kids need. They, they need to be able to do what they want to do. They don't always want to listen to, here's what we're doing next. And it's just, it's been such a great class and it's just time for them to sort of talk amongst themselves. I mean, they aren't always with other students. They're, you know, they're working from home and they have a chance to be together and have conversations about what they're interested in. And it's such a wonderful group of kids. Yeah, I just love these students. Yeah, this is what we're going to do in at Options. So thank you for letting me share all this with you.
Thank you.
Overnight travel request from the baseball team.
All right, I let Mr. Scaram know that I would go ahead and share this for him from the This is the same trip and Mr. Scaram, this is his first year serving as head coach. Coach Anzalone has taken this trip and gone to the same.
And Mr. Scaram.
He's been, and Mr. Scaram has gone with him for years. It's just got lost in that transition, the formality of that approval, which we typically do a week in the, in the fall or the spring when they get back and they report from that. But it's the exact same trip that we do here after each other's season and experience in that. They'll be going again over the spring break. They go to Myrtle Beach and all the plans are pretty much the same. Only difference is Coach Anzalone is, won't be on the trip, at least not as a head coach. Mr. Scaram is there and all the details related to the trip are there as well. Still plan to use the same Jones bus and maybe the Busch bus there and stay for the week. It gives them a nice opportunity to get a jumpstart on the season since our weather is a little unpredictable.
How many people do we have doing baseball this year that were going on the trip?
Great question. I did not know that. Well, I know they always follow, lots of parents go with them because it is over that spring break. So they always have to be in chef rooms and.
It's an amazing trip. My son went on it and it's hugely beneficial to team bonding and.
Traditionally, they usually take the JV and varsity, right? Usually 20 to 30 players.
When Ross was playing, they didn't, but now they, I think the last couple of times they've started doing that. Yeah, I guess the coaches a good look at players and their abilities and which team they kind of want them to play on too.
Any questions?
On the, on the notice, it says $200 per player off that expenses due March 10th, et cetera. If the fundraising exceeds what they expected, does that mean that the players have less funds than they have to raise? Or themselves, or is it always going to be $200 and then the rest just goes into a different type of fund?
John, do you happen to be, could you speak to that, how that's traditionally been handled?
Yeah, the, the trip cost altogether is about $22,000. So certainly it takes quite a bit of fundraising and it, yes, if there was additional fundraising that exceeded the expectation of what the team thought, that amount would be reduced. So that's just really to supplement the trip.
And how many players typically go, John, in recent history?
I think last year we took 24 and that was varsity and JV. And we've done that the last two times. And so I know, kind of working with Mike through this and setting this up this year, that he was doing that as well. And I think he scheduled two JV games and four varsity games while they're down there.
And so you typically get approximately 80% of the event fundraised and covered?
Correct. Yeah, it is kind of costly and it does help and to have the kids supplement it a little bit. And we have in the past had kids that expressed that they wouldn't be able to go. And we found a way to give them a scholarship if it came to that.
But there's no other questions for us?
I move to approve the overnight travel request from the high school baseball team as presented.
Is there a second? So we moved a second into approve your overnight travel request from the high school baseball team as presented.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Allen? Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scaram?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Wish them the best of luck. Word minutes. The regular session meeting from the 13th and then the 20th. And then a closed session from the 13th. Maybe we need to get approved, maybe we will separately. Mr. Gatton, you should probably abstain since we've got. Any questions on this? I can't help the close session.
So they all be separate to follow it? Okay, separate. I move to approve the minute. Is there questions?
No.
You didn't say no questions? I move to approve the minutes of the February 13th, 2023, regular sessions school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
So we moved a second into approve the minutes of the February 13th, 2023, regular sessions school board meeting as presented.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatton?
Stay.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scaram?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
I move to approve the minutes of the February 13th, 2023, closed sessions school board meeting as presented.
A second.
So we moved a second to approve the minutes of the February 13th, 2023, closed sessions school board meeting as presented.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatton?
Stay.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Abstain.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scaram?
Yes.
Ms. Colton? And Ms. Williams?
I move to approve the minutes of the February 20th, 2023, school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Move a second into approve the minutes of the February 20th, 2023, school board meeting as presented.
So Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatton?
Stay.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scaram?
Yes.
Ms. Colton? And Ms. Williams?
General Other Fund bills, Mr. Truul. The general other fund bills, saving covers checks number 148659 to 148760. Wire transfers number 732s through 738. ACH checks number 522 to 549, combined amount of $319,297.45. There was a memo providing some additional information on several of the bills. Theater packet and then following the bill listing the copy of the Treasury report for the month of January.
Questions, Mr. Truul?
So what was the MJ care, so the old note was OT service, that wasn't true?
Occupational therapy service.
Got it.
Special ed.
Okay.
Other questions?
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of February 27th, 2023. 148659 to 148760. Wire number 732 to 738. ACH numbers 522 to 549 in a combined amount of $319,297.45 as presented.
Is there a second? So we moved a second into approve the general other fund bills of February 27th, 2023. Checks number 148659 to 148760. Wire number 732 to 738. ACH number 522 to 549, combined amount of $319,297.45 as presented.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Allen? Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scaram?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Division to the 23, 24 school calendar. Hey, we have two calendars to look at tonight. The first one, the 23, 24 calendar, which was approved last year. So this is next year's calendar, not this coming year's calendar. There's a request for one modification to it. And it was based off of positive feedback from, in particular, teaching staff and families as well. On the 15th of February, they would like to shift that day before the in-service on the 16th to a full day of parent-teacher conferences for the kindergarten through fifth grade. Followed a similar format to this year, so that would be a modification to that longer, difficult change. Amy, anything you want to add to that or?
No, I think, Jason, that covers it. We had very positive feedback being able to offer morning conferences and times throughout the day to allow, you know, all working parents an opportunity to come in face to face. Very favorable experiences and so we'd like to continue that twice a year. That would also involve our 4K sites. They too would then conference on that day as well.
And then the other conferences, that October 26th?
That is correct, yep.
That's the second one you're referring to? From a minute standpoint, the elementary has approximately 12 days worth of additional instructional time. This is still even, about 11 days worth of addition.
So you guys didn't see any drop-off due to the fact that it's the day before there's no school day? So the parents are just day to take off or?
Someone is having right now, there's a day in a row that they're, yeah, the weekend, obviously. There's three days off.
Of course, this year we have, so I get it.
Amy, did you hear that question?
No, could they repeat that, please?
Question was, did we see a drop-off in the parent-teacher conference participation because of that additional day out from school, perhaps parents traveling out of town and going on vacation rather than staying to do the parent-teacher conference?
You know, interestingly enough, I can only base this on October and this, we've done this for two years in October now. We, we certainly haven't. Now in October, we also offer another evening because we try to see all of our families in October. So, you know, if parents are going out of town, they usually opt for that other evening that week. You know, this, with the snow day, you, you totally read my mind. This year would follow that similar pattern as well with that Thursday. You know, if there is an occurrence where a family is going out of town, other arrangements are made. Often our teachers, you know, put in a few hours on a different evening to, to make everything work. You know, we try to stay within limits of like 20-minute conferences. But often if a family needs more time, we, we flex and move on to other days. So I think we'll have to, we'll have to see how that goes. And then, you know, report back as to if it's impacted or not. The other thing is with the early morning conferences, that still gives families time to get on the road that day as well for those that are leaving town. Just a thought there.
Yeah, my only concern when looking at it was that's a lot of days off for working families to have to figure out childcare arrangements for their kids that may not need the conference or they have multiple kids or whatever, because that's three days in a row off. And then the kindergarten, the 4K is off again that fall and they come the 21st.
I, I see what you're saying, Jenny. I definitely do. Otherwise, moving it to another week causes, you know, just that Thursday off or, or whatever day we look at. So that it, it, there's kind of pros and cons either way. So I think we thought by clustering it like this, it would be very similar to the first snow day we had that just kind of led into that, that longer weekend. It's similar to how things look in October with the exception that, you know, we don't have that Monday designated as the day off. You're right.
The alternative is, because if you put it on another Thursday, you know what I mean? It's one day off in the middle of the week, which is hard. No, it doesn't have to be. It doesn't.
But also just keeping it clustered like that, allowing, allowing families that it's going to be very impossible for us to make, make everybody happy all at the same time. So keeping a cluster like that allows us to be able to at least give the kids and the families that can accommodate during that point a, a longer weekend than just a, say, three-day weekend. At least allows them to be able to have a fourth day or, or at least three and a half days after, after they have conferences with parents or even the teachers, excuse me. But no matter what, those conferences still need to happen. So if it's on just a regular day, then they're still happy to take off part of that day to go and take care of the kids. At least that makes it again planned for, hey, I now have off on Thursday and Friday back to back.
One of the other benefits of just clustering it there was the return day that Friday is an in-service for teachers. So if we're asking them to put in 11 hours, 11 hours plus that Thursday, knowing they come back in Friday, they don't have to be prepared for students for a full day. They're, you know, prepared for meetings and, you know, time like that. But it's a, it's a different ask to have them here for that 11 hours. I also agree, like you were saying, for the families, maybe clustering is better. It's, it's still an ask for them for that day, but we're finding an increase in attendance. Many families do want to be face-to-face for conferences, which is, which we very much enjoy, although we're able to do this virtually or by phone if necessary. But again, you know, I'm happy to report back next March after we've given it a go just to see, you know, how that, how that timeline worked. If there would then need to be adjustments to the following year's calendar.
So just to clarify so everyone understands, that light blue day, the teachers work from, they, they come in the morning and they do the night conferences as well. So that's where I, I would not want to move it to a Friday because then we're asking people to come in on a Friday night until eight or nine o'clock. If you put it on, as you said, Amy, on like a Thursday night, you know, it's, that's a long day to then roll into a workday.
Yeah, I don't have a guess, a better alternative, so.
I know, and I mean, it makes sense when you, a Monday, Thursday, then it's Friday. At least they get a Monday holiday.
We would need a motion or action on this if we want to approve that.
I move to approve the revised 2023, 2024 school calendar as presented.
So a second? Second. So we moved a second to approve the revised 2023, 2024 school calendar as presented.
Oh, Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scaram?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Jason, can I just ask to step back and have a correction on the votes? I had my days kind of mixed up with the meetings. For the February 20th meeting, I wasn't there, so I want to abstain on that one. And I had that mixed up with the 13th, which I was there, and then I would vote for that one.
I got it.
I got, I was a little confused there. I got my calendar here, but too many things marked, too many meetings. But yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't able to be there on the 20th.
Okay, I noted that on both. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The 24, 25 calendar would follow basically the same pattern as the 23, 24. The difference is we did, in order to end school on this week in June, actually, this is probably the earliest since.
I was going to say.
I can recall.
Now we're seeing graduation and paying.
It's, well, it's because of Labor Day, starting.
Right, so early.
On the 2nd, yeah. So we always start after the, the county fair, but Labor Day is almost as early as it can be this year. So that awards us some flexibility. But in order to finish school on that, that 5th, we proposed doing 169 in structural, instead of 170, adding a teacher workday on that shift. And then everything else in the calendar pretty much follows the same system. Questions on that? And I have, and I, I like that too, that it gets, because we do lose kids when you have a two days before the Christmas break or so forth, people go on those trips, and it's a lot cheaper to book travel. So I'm excited about.
Yeah, it's three over three weeks, that'll be nice.
And we'll be done for a few kids. Seven.
Yeah.
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 Well, we started. If you have a shorter summer break, either way, you do the same amount.
Right, right.
Any questions?
I move to approve the 2024-2025 school calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second into approve the 24-25 school calendar as presented. Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegert?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Colton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
What should carry the student report?
Yeah, I have tonight and Pro Start, I just want to say that the slides are really useful. You know, it's the next thing to the main snow days we had, maybe with the chella.
I got control of the word. Laying too much credit.
Very thankful to be in my house. Um, so backpacking off that, at Westside, they had a top four virtual day. To write it that, they're making clay communities in our class. And my favorite part of this presentation is seeing all the kids dress up as 100-year-olds for 100 days of school. I looked at my Twitter Facebook and seen all the pictures of your very group. And so those are the two pictures, and then on the bottom right is Project Leadway. Deco-restraint system for collision systems, building cars and putting aviation in, running to a rock and then eventually it doesn't crack. I'm a timid to getting about 100 days of school, so you can see how cute that is. And, um, so the BW extension and the 4H came and they made paper meeting activities. So then they also learned about recycling and all that good stuff. Under that is just a picture that they made in, uh, when their classes, they spend in a snowball with Ola. And then their Valentine's Day party. On the left there, you'll see Abraham Lincoln and the students, uh, they had an assignment where they had to, if I were president, so we just needed all sorts of things, they would do if they were president. To write that, uh, they're making weaving in our class, so that is the finished product. So, uh, that's the thing, which I think is good for when you do that when I was in elementary school. Um, again, we have our 100th day of school. And on the bottom, we have gym class. So at the middle school, I know the picture's a little blurry, but it's a, a big fat check from the mattress sale, $5,000, which I think is really incredible. Um, and then those t-shirts are, so they're learning all different types of careers in the engineering field. And then they were also learning about graphic design, so they combined two, and they made some t-shirts of their chosen careers.
Yeah.
And then on the bottom there, you'll see youth fields is building their outdoor classroom.
That's completed now.
Oh, I saw the new thing she was recording.
Yeah, they might have, uh, I, I know there was a visitor from Project Leadway National that came and visited the elementary, high school, and, um, long story short, she was blown away by the implementation of the program that we have there. Next fall, Project Leadway, which there's over 10,000 school districts in the country that do Project Leadway, will be, they've asked us to host a nationwide site visit to the schools that will invite educational readers around the country to come and see it because of the, and I don't know if that's where the picture's got posted, but that visit.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
All right, so at the high school, there's been a lot of hard work and a lot of success and great accomplishments. So if you're a student, uh, we had Reagan went to state for skiing. Uh, we had our southern mates, I think it's academic school, and we had three people who placed there. Um, we had our gymnastics team that qualified first state and they were runners-up. And then, uh, two teams competed at the, the autumn, uh, the skill demonstration, so they had, the first phase was a rain test and the second phase was a skill demonstration. Um, they placed third, but they won a $5,000 scholarship for each person on the team that just went through it. And they also got $1,500 worth of snap-on tools.
Nice.
And there on the bottom right is our very own Ms. Jenny Waymeyer, a culinary teacher, and she, uh, closer educated years, so just wanted to include that in there. Not featured, but just backpacking off that, uh, you know, also had Florida qualifiers for state. At SCCA, they had a handful of qualifiers for state. And then gymnastics has also qualified for state, and, you know, rain zone, the rest of them just was a runner-up. And the rest, so it's one great thing to have in the classroom.
Yeah, Jenny Waymeyer, this was for the entire state of Wisconsin, and Pro Start is the organization which facilitates the professional certifications that the students earn for culinary arts and the Pro Start certification. So, um, it's a great recognition in honor of all of that work that she's done in expanding the program and giving access to our students, leaving what professional certifications are at high schools.
Um, at Options, there was a trackside skating field trip. And then, um, for our many maker fair, I know they had a bunch of booths, and Ms. Wachowski and the options doing some structured fair participants in making fairy potter ones and making bug paper circuits. So I know last year they did Star Wars. Yeah, I think that was always a beautiful book to book too.
Do we know how many people attended, Jason?
I don't know how many, I know they were pleased with the attendance, and the booth was such an amazing event. Erica Card and Rebecca Long did a fantastic job with, with that. It was steady, it wasn't overly crowded to where it was, I'm not sure if you can get in the booth, but it was, they were pleased with the attendance.
There's some more pictures right there on the way, I see some of my favorites. Honestly, I had to include the goats in the poppy. And then of course, the animal station. And then to the left with the CCA pictures, and just continuing to remodel their spaces so those informations can improve.
Thank you very much. Director's report? It is, you mainly asked the Center of Homes to come and speak to some of the programming that's going on related to the Community Resilience Outreach Program.
Thank you very much for your time. And some of you folks know me for a couple things that I come to update you on the community resilience position. Congratulations to you, thanks, and thanks. Well, tonight, I'm going to just briefly touch base on some community programs, collaborations, snag in a pack, but I, I'm going to get in a little bit of detail about the Smart Recovery Program. So, community programs that have been occurring is I am continuing with a series of the in-conversation events. This year, we are focusing on holding the events at the schools. So we have Health Activities, Jackson. This month, we're going to be at Westside, and this month, we're going to be talking about managing family schedules. Previous conversations have been keeping it safe online and creating Life Well and Larners, which was last month at Jackson, which was nice because four of the teachers came in and was the panel. It's very engaging. We continue to do the book club at Matheson Memorial Library, and we've had some standalone programs. Dr. Hudnall came and talked to the community, as well as this Thursday at Matheson Memorial Library, we have NAMM Rock County come and talk about mental health, the difference between mental health, mental illness. And the big thing that I'm super excited about with this conversation is Detective is coming and sharing about de-escalation measures for faults. So this is geared for customers coming in and business owners, how to determine if it's an escalation process where they have to call the police department, or if it's a conversation to have with, with people to see if they can de-escalate. First and foremost, I was going to say, call the police department for safety measures, but a lot of times it's learning techniques, and that's what we're going to talk about this Thursday at Matheson for the later part of the presentation. We've been working and collaborating with Health and Human Services a lot this year. One way that we've been doing that is they have a program called Hidden and Plain Sight, which they have held that program at the middle school and high school during conferences. There have been folks that would take that, and hoping to hear more of that presentation last year. Also, Health and Human Services came and spoke to all of our fit preachers in each of the elementary schools about babying, and that was a big success. We have had fundraising initiatives this year. One, um, way that we have done that was with Alcorn Benefit Beauty. We raised over $1,000, where folks turned in their prom dresses. We sold them to make sure that everybody had the opportunity to go to the dances that is healthier within the school district. Also, I've worked with fundraising for Hope Squad within schools. We were at the Brat Cut, and then we did, we called it Hope for a Minute and ran through the bleachers and we didn't lose school year, we sponsored it for the Hope Squad. We are working on establishing a nonprofit. This has been, um, an adventure. We have our fourth meeting tomorrow night, and this is, all the meetings are held in different locations within Walworth County. So tomorrow meeting is at the Lion Sealing, Lake Geneva, and it's from folks all within Walworth County and raising awareness, seeing the resources that we have out there, and community members working together.
So is that, like, going to be before them from the county, because you need, you know, multiple members on the property?
Yes.
Is that maybe an Alcorn?
No, not so, we Alcorn but all of Walworth County. And it's working with programs that are already out there, like NAMM, like Mental Health America. It's just more focused within Walworth County, because what we have found out is that a lot of fundraising measures within these organizations go throughout the state from funding to stuff. Nothing really stays strictly here within Walworth County, and we want to make sure funds do stay here. So it's a collaboration of everything, of all of us working together to make sure every person is. Um, another thing that I have been working on is interns with daily. So I, I'm my second intern, the first one graduated, yay for him, sad for me, but it's, and we have another person, Riley, that I've been working closely with, she had finished the, um, Westside, and all of our resources are out there, as well as working on Miguel Glass, that I have now initiated and sent out to keep everybody up to date with the programs that are occurring here within Alcorn. Snag in a Pack, I'm sure you folks have heard about Snag in a Pack, and we have received a great many donations for this program. This has been very hopeful, that the program has been grown. A student received seven items to go home with them from our elementary schools, and now we incorporated the middle school. Right now, the attendance for the middle school, attendance, that, um, folks that are receiving funds or receiving bags from the middle school are low, but we're hoping that starting in September, when school starts and they sign up for the programs, that that will increase. Um, for this to happen, we have received many donations from civic organizations, private businesses, clubs, and people also have stepped up to volunteer. As a matter of fact, we have a private school from Delvin coming to stuff the bags this Friday, as well as they sold some items in their private store, and they want to donate that to Snag in a Pack. So people from all of the, from Walworth County have really found a passion to make sure people are viewed by. As well as people, we have young people and older people that fill in the bags, and they embroidered all the school's name on each of the bags, because they felt like they should be identified of previous home days, so that it's really cute.
And who have the other schools starting in Texas, and who have the other schools in Walworth County?
They have somewhat of a similar program, but, um, is, I know Delvin is starting up, but they are struggling a little bit, and the only reason why I know that is being on the United Way Board and talking to a lot of the non-profit organizations. Sure.
I mean, I know RNE is great, but I know, I mean, it's just from.
Yeah, it's all around.
It's, it's everywhere, so.
Especially.
It's the copy at all of those places.
It would be nice. And they do have a program called Blessings in a Backpack, which is trademarked.
Yep.
That's why we stuck with Snag in a Pack, since it was a trademark. Um, we feed 90 students a week, 360 students, and those numbers can vary. Like I said, I believe that they will grow, um, to next year, when you start at the beginning of your week and sign up to the program. Um, Smart Recovery, so this is where I can, I want to put the time into it. I'm just gonna, if you want to take a look at these folders, when a student starts Smart Recovery, they get the folder, there's information in there, I have more folders if you wanted to look. But as you have heard, an aspect of what I do is collaborating with folks to help them receive the resources that they may need. Sometimes I'm unable to see those resources in, in helping families, but sometimes I'm unable to see how this position can build a family. I'm fortunate to see this through the Smart Recovery Program. I want to share a story with you, and I did write it down because sometimes I get too excited, my brain goes all over the place on this. A family comes into the Alcorn Municipal Court with their daughter. They are not happy to be there because they feel the school picked on their daughter again, in her citation. They see the judge, and the judge feels that Smart Recovery may be a good fit for their daughter. Rolling their eyes as they come back from talking to the judge, they sign up for the program. And I shared with them, this program is one hour long, twice a month, for the next three months, called at Matheson Memorial Library. Reluctantly, they sign up for the program, and both the student and the parent sign the expectation form, which is in that folder. So anytime somebody signs up for the program and I meet with them at the court, they get this program before, or this folder. Before they leave that court, they have to sign that expectation form, then they know the future dates that they come to that program. So I had my notions on how this family would accept this program, and the only reason that they even signed the program was the expectation that the daughter's citation will either be lowered or dismissed. So I know this going ahead, and I had my preconceived thoughts about it. The first meeting did not happen very good. Mom didn't see me standing at the entrance way, and she felt I was not responsive or fast enough to welcome her. After she was welcomed and the mom was dismissed to leave for an hour, the daughter comes into the group session, sees four of her other peers sitting next to her, and just rolled her eyes, so you know she got a chip on her shoulder. This first meeting comes and goes. Then the second meeting, the daughter starts talking a little bit more, she's feeling more comfortable and more engaged with the peers around her. All the peers started sharing a little bit of stories about what's happening at home and what's happening within the school. Third meeting, well, she's telling 15-minute stories, and we have to kind of stop her so we can continue with the program and with our curriculum that we have that we want to work on. And by the fourth meeting, I think she wanted to leave the group. She had done homework, she looked at the curriculum ahead of time, and she was anticipating of what we were going to talk about next. Seeing this young woman grow and feel comfortable is a good reminder of what I do with this program. And it actually set me on my tracks to not judge a buck by its cover. I think most folks, especially young people in this program, want to be heard. And once they feel that it's comfortable and safe, they know that they are. Smart Recovery doesn't just focus on addiction or share about how alcohol is bad, but what it does talk about is a skill set to manage life. Currently, there's an intern from Crehens, her name is Morgan, they're a co-facility. Currently, there's an intern from Creedence, her name is Morgan, they're co-facilities, and we actually will have Sandy, who works at Jackson, that starts up on this Wednesday with the group. So during the six sessions, the group talks about building motivation, coping with urges, self-management of thoughts, feelings, and behaviors, living a balanced life and goal-setting. And then the very last group is an evaluation, and I did bring their evaluations for the young folks that have graduated, what they thought of the program. All of us here, knowing how hard adult life can be, know that these topics take more than one hour to become a routine in our life, but no one in the group expects them to know this right away. They soak in the knowledge, and they, they don't change their outlook overnight, but out of the five groups that we currently run, with a total of ten students finishing right now, we say that they graduate, they get a little certificate at the bottom when they leave. They all shared walking away with a skill set that they learned, hopefully that they will remember, and notes that they can look through. I always say, you're gonna push them off to the side until they probably get stuck in a running, hopefully you can pull them back out. So currently, there have been three groups that completed the course with ten students graduating since we started in October. We will be starting our sixth group Wednesday. So it's a cyclical rotation. The impact Smart Recovery has on the total of twenty students that are in there right now, and their families since it started, is a better understanding of social development for themselves, but most importantly, growing in their relationship with their families, their peers, and the community, and that's what we want. Is there any questions about the Smart Recovery?
Yes. So number one, you said, you said that it's a, it's a set group, so what I mean by that is, people aren't just showing up during different sessions, it's a set way you have it set up, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so how often do those run?
Okay, so the step is, is that we go into court, the judge looks at their citation, if the judge feels that the student is a good fit, they come and see me, they see that expectation form, and then they're actually set with six days and a certain timeframe on those days of their expectation for the next three months. And it's always, it's gonna be a Wednesday and a Saturday, so it's only twice a month. So we have to change it up, because they changed the court dates, but so it's the first Wednesday is usually the last Saturday that that happens. We start our first session, three fifteen to four fifteen, there's a fifteen minute break, so then we go four thirty to five thirty, fifteen minute break, five forty-five to six forty-five for Wednesday nights. And then Saturdays, we start at nine fifteen to ten fifteen, have that break, ten thirty to eleven thirty, have that break, and then eleven forty-five to twelve forty-five.
So you have six different cohorts running at any given time?
It, yes, yep.
The, I apologize, no, the, when people come to your program, I love the success story, but is that, is that common and normal like that, or is it just luck?
So I always say, as we start the program, you can't pick and choose of who the group is gonna be. I can, I compare it, and Ms. Williamson, Ms. Colby, may not understand this correlation, but I kinda compare it to the breakfast group. You have all different personalities that are there, so it depends on how they view the personalities. The first session that we had, no. You know, they were very, they were very quiet, very, very different, you could not pull them back together. And it's a learning on our parts as well. Our sessions have been going, it has been good. We try not to mix the middle school with the high school, so we do have one middle school session, a middle school group right now, super quiet, so that's been a little bit trying. We have another session where, and this, this current is coming, where four people are in a group, two people did not show that first day, so it's just two. And my rule is, you can miss, but you have to reach out to me, and this is your responsibility, you have to reach out to me to make up that session before the next session starts. So, and those other two people didn't, so that two-person group, it, it actually is growing to be very successful, but it's taken a little bit.
Is this conwayed or just a plan? I have to ask, because there's so many things that you're doing right now.
It's, it's a pilot program here within Elkhorn.
Okay, so they're all over the country.
Correct. Well, it's whoever city of Elkhorn gives a citation. So if a student is here.
Does not count anything, it's city.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Couple of folks have reached out, and I would, I had met with the police liaisons and the municipal judges, and all of them said, man, it sounds like a great program, start off in Elkhorn first, and then come back to us.
We, I appreciate, this has been a lot of work in progress to get to this, this point, and I remember working with Safe Families years ago, when I had a freshman daughter group, Safe Families, or again, the people that live with us, and addiction issues, and there was, we looked all over, there was nothing within our region or area related to addiction recovery. We were able to, you know, she went to Rogers Day Treatment Program, came out very proud to be sober for, for her, I think it was six weeks at that point, where sobriety lasted probably a month, but not having that ongoing support or that ability to go into additional programs where she would have benefited from that, you know, the program that we now have established. And I know it's been a lot of working with Health and Human Services, the law enforcement, I really appreciate the city of Elkhorn and our Judge Duquette, and, you know, the law enforcement in being able to help with that aspect, but I, I see this as something that's really going to take off and grow. I know since I spent a lot of time finding and research-based proven program that will have an impact for the kids, and it gives that positive alternative. Something I was very frustrated with was, as that guardian, not knowing what to do for Mike Duquette, and not knowing what to do, and, you know, the house almost burned down because of a hot wire date that just got tossed in the trash can, started a fire, but you had nothing to refer the individual to to get that, that help. So I hope this gives that parental support and community support, and enables us to start reaching those kids. As much as I hate to see large numbers in a program, we, we need to service the, the population if it's.
And as you share that, we all know that there's an underlying need concerns with addiction, and this helps finding that skill set on a very basic level, completely basic level, so you kinda go, ooh, I see how that works. And you actually, as you talk through, you see their, their brains working and going, oh, I understand that, which makes you wanna grab them longer, and right now, we just won't have that, and hopefully it will now. Yeah.
So, so obviously, we're working with county court system.
City, right now.
Okay.
City, right now, yes.
So are, from their standpoint, are they seeing these individuals who are going through the program as maintaining, or, you know?
Yeah, they're not coming back in.
Correct.
That part I don't know. We have started in October, it takes three months to go through. Hopefully, it'd be nice if it's not, you know, they don't repeat. That part I don't know.
We, we should definitely, this coming summer, going, actually, we should track that and see if we can, see what that will still be, yes, but.
Yeah.
Rate this and see if, yeah, we'll see, yes, thank you.
I could say that.
Yeah, see what that rate is.
I think trouble's saying admiration now here.
Yeah. Okay, what's been the parents, Elkhorn, after everyone's, I do, every parent is mad at the mess for the part where they're doing, so I'm sure that initial reaction is heated and migrate.
I only see the parents at the first, I don't see them at the last. And a lot of times, these folks, these young people are driving, so when they leave after the last session, I don't get to see a parent when they pick them up. There's been a couple of parents where they look at me, and I'm like, yep, they're doing good. And the parents are receptive that they know that they can't be in there, because it is a safe space, we do talk about family, and that stuff does not get repeated. We have norms and rules and expectations when we start the group, so that students know that they can't talk about outside the group, everything stays private, even with their parent, except that they report the information.
I know there are some groups that, like within the group, while you're continuing on with the, the group that's going on, so for example, the Syracuse group, they're with you, they can't be with other individuals outside of that group. Is that one of your guys, is there as well, or?
Well, so it depends, one aspect of that is if it's court order. So we had a couple codependents that had to be specifically not, and I know this isn't your question, but not within the same group. We tell the students in the group is that if us personally, we see you outside, we're not gonna go, hey, Timmy, how's it going? How are you feeling today? We're gonna pretend like we don't know you, unless you approach to us and you feel comfortable with it, then you tell us outside of its permission. But do we share that they can't talk? We have not, and I know that would be hard, because I know in one of the groups, two students have a class together at the high school. So, but what we do say is that nobody knows that you're here, we don't go and tell it. I did add, add per the recommendation through the counselors, that if the counselors know that they're in group, if they can contact me and say, how are they doing, because they could possibly be in counseling with a counselor at the school. So that information is being shared. So the students and the parents are aware of that.
So the counselors are reaching out to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I am unfortunate enough to sit at our meetings where we're all together, and I kinda give them an update about that. Any other questions? Future goals, May mental health month, so I'm looking to collaborate with some different school districts to put on a big show, so to speak. We're trying to figure out what that looks like, and it's coming up quick. I'd like to start a parent compass group. We, I had talked with the police department, and we would like to do some form of Shop with a Cup coming in December for families, and I'm working to do an Excal fair, January twenty twenty-four, and that is hands-on learning what keeps you mindfulness in this world. If it's photography and you've never done that before, you can come to the fair and do a hands-on journaling, gardening, some stuff like that. So working to collaborate with partnerships for that together in January.
Parent Compass Group.
Parent Compass Group is a group that I had found it's support group, so to speak, for parents of teenagers, and there's certain types of groups that they have, and we do the parents one, where they can come together and collaborate on what problems that they have, and focus on one certain problem, and then key steps how to get that problem successful. Established.
Who leads that?
I'm certified to lead it now, so, but I'm hoping that I can get other folks that are certified within our resource, so I wish to.
And Shop with a Cup, can you expand on that?
This is an idea that I would like to work with partners here at the city of Elkhorn, and for families that are in need, and maybe have certain requirements, not sure yet, brainstorming, and where we can have a dinner, a hands-on learning activity, instead of just going shopping, and then having some items met with in their household that they need for the holiday season. Any other questions? Great. Thank you, thank you very much.
I appreciate your time and energy.
You guys have a good night.
Yep.
Oh, okay, it's okay. Thank you.
Nice. Russell Combs, I've sent out a lot of these initiatives she took to, for example, to be the spirit head, so to speak, to go and get the training and certification done, in order to create the program, because it didn't exist in our region, just as within your everyone, and then work to expand that and build that, and I think it's gonna have a lasting impact, not just in Elkhorn, but in the other community as they see those alternatives to getting against the assistance that they need in the nervous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, referendum update, we did share a link in there, these are upcoming presentations, I would, or the schedule of groups and organizations that have asked for us to present to them. I just have, I had another one come in today from the town of Spring Prairie, on March sixteenth, so we'll add that to the calendar, but just as a reminder, an open invite that any group or organization that wants information related to the referendum, we're happy to go wherever they'd like and share the information or answer any questions. The, and then I'll turn this over to Mr. Turwin, he put together a forecast, a very good question that's come up, that Tony Evers announced his budget proposal, and what would that look like, knowing that we, the, the school board with the information that we had at the time, and the timeline in which you have to submit the questions that go to referendum, you have to do your best guess as to what the state would put for funding. And so our parameters that we put in was two hundred dollars increase per pupil on revenue, and for both years in the Biennium. That was what we based the referendum ask on. The question that comes up is now Governor Evers released that budget, what does that look like, is the board committed to, if the referendum were to pass, fully utilizing, you know, up to the, you know, the dollar amount that is needed to continue businesses as we have. So Bill, turn it over, and I, before I turn it over to you, I'll just say, Governor Evers' budget is a pass.
Exactly.
So it's a, it's a pipe dream that if, if people are, depending on where you're sitting from, if you're, the reality is, it's not going to pass as constituted. So where will it lie at the end of the day? Probably somewhere between, I would wager closer to one point, but who knows? But it, it's nice, it's a good question to ask, and I'll turn it over to Bill, and you can go ahead and speak there.
Jason, I think you just summed it up. You know, I, again, I, I think it was just worth costing out because of what he outlined, I guess, in November, and then what he announced in February were a little different, so he included a lot more money for special education, that was probably the biggest component, so when you add that in, along with the per pupil three fifty and six fifty, and then the increase in the per pupil allocation, that has a significant impact. Again, like Jason mentioned, certainly not indicating we think that's gonna be our reality, but it may be somewhere in between those two scenarios, the question is where, and who knows? But the next step in the process is the Joint Finance Committee, which is the arm of the legislature that really does the budget development, will now start their process, and they'll do a series of hearings around the state, and they'll probably do that for a month or two. And then from that, they will look at the governor's budget, they may modify it, they may write their own budget, and then that'll go back and forth, probably until June, July, and, and that'll probably, hopefully, we'll find out what the final state budget looks like. That's a typical pattern, we really don't know until June or July, and a lot of those final decisions happen kind of at the one and hour. And, and we'll have kind of a sense maybe of where things might be, but again, things change quickly through that legislative, government process in Madison, so. Again, like Jason mentioned, just wanted to give kind of a, a view of what that looks like, and know how that differs, but certainly not, that's gonna be our reality.
Yeah, it does have a huge impact on that projected shortfall, because the proposed budget does keep up with inflationary costs over the next Biennium, so it eliminates that deficit, it doesn't do anything for the prior Biennium where. It doesn't do anything for the prior biennium where there's a zero dollar revenue limit increase for the two years and didn't keep up with the inflation for the past two years. But it does significantly reduce. So whatever the legislature and the governor that they come together on, the closer it gets to the inflationary projections, then it has a significant impact on the reduction of our shortfall. Because a $200 per pupil increase, which was what we, you know, projected because that's been, it, it hasn't even been typical. It's been like in the best years since oh eight, oh nine, it's been about $200. That accounts for, it's now less than 2% of the bill. It accounts for about 1.7, 1.8%. So when you're looking at, you know, overall CPI, it falls a little short of what costs are and.
And there's a link there you can see for Governor Evers. If you click on that, that's the school board summary of the state budget that's proposed. There's a lot in there.
It'll be an interesting process going through with the legislators and the governor and how they work that out. Any other questions related to that?
Yeah, I'll have a great discussion on this because I did a deep dive today doing analytical processing of the numbers, which you just told me it's a fictitious number. And I'm in a, I'm in a math class way above my head, I guess. But I was looking and trying to analyze the numbers and referendum scenarios and try to get clear explanations because I'm quite confused and I'm sure many people in the community are. I looked back at our financial analysis scenarios, scenario one and two, which was $200 increase per pupil. And then a scenario three, which was a proposed Governor Evers at $350. And reading today, it looked like his proposal was $300 per pupil. But as I analyzed all of our information, nothing lines up. Because if you look at the slides you have up right now, the budget forecast with $200 per year per pupil increase that we have listed, we have the projected deficit listed right now at $3,478,000. But in the financial analysis that we did earlier while we were trying to formulate numbers, it was 3,766,138 or 3,619,621. So those don't align. And then the tax impact per 100,000 on what we have now is $120 the first year, 23, 24, 185. The following year, 198. But when we wrote the referendum question, I believe for question one, the five-year non-reoccurring operational referendum came out to $198 per 100,000. And the reoccurring one for the four K program was $17 per 100,000. As I look at that now, nothing lines up. And then if we look at Governor Evers' proposal, it says $69 per 100,000. And I know you said that's, that's not realistic, but it becomes more confusing then. So as I look at it, the real question is I have, when the community goes for referendum, we are voting on a $6 million for each of the five years, correct?
Correct.
So, so what happens if we don't need to use all 6 million? How does that impact the levy? Does it get prorated or whatever? I'm afraid we're going to end up in a Monroe type of situation. Because if you take $6 million over five years, that's 30 million. And looking at our numbers right now, that puts a $13 million excess into the fund 10 balance. And I know there's no definitive numbers right now, but it makes it hard to explain to people, where are the realities of this? Because like I said, the first one we came out was 198 for part eight and 17 for part B. And now none of those numbers line up anymore. And our forecast at $200 per year, which we worked with before on both scenario one and two, now it's just 120 and 185. So I, I guess the more I looked into it, the more confused I am. And if I'm confused and I have all the information, I'm really concerned about the voters.
Paul, we took your feedback off of that question. You're absolutely right. The question is $6 million. The tax impact is 198. That hasn't changed. What Bill's showing in this chart is our projected need is less than the 6 million, which the board committed to underleaving on that. Based off of your input, not wanting to sound like used car salesmen are confusing the public by adding that stent in approach, all of our communication on our flyers or on the website sticks to, and if you look at that information, the 198 projected per $100,000 in property value. To avoid that confusion. But we've all known all along that that impact is more than likely to be much less than that based on what is actually utilized. But based off of your feedback when that question was put together, the board felt that it was better to put the worst case scenario, the $6 million per year for all five years, so that we don't run into a situation like Monroe where they undercommunicated what that tax impact would be. But the reality is, if you're asked, the tax impact is probably going to be much less, even in the scenario of $200 per pupil. And that's all this chart is showing is that that projected deficit and what the district would need to balance is not going to be the full 6 million.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, what you're saying is, is everything that we're telling the community is that that's 6 million and 198 for 100,000, correct? And then we're hoping that it'll be less than that? And that's what that chart's showing?
Yes. I would put a huge wager that it will be less than that. But we didn't want, we wanted worst case scenario communicated. That was the decision of the group.
Yeah.
So that no matter where that came out, because we don't know what the budget's going to be, what it's going to land. But we're pretty confident it's going to be quite a bit less than that impact. That also doesn't account for, and we talked about this at the time, any property tax state aids that the, the state would put into the formula to lower the local levy as well, which we're sure that will come back to us. But yes, you're, you're absolutely right. This is a worst case scenario projection that whatever it comes back at, you know, well, we can almost guarantee it'd be less than that. This is what we decided to communicate out so that people would know that worst case scenario is less than we can predict.
And in terms of property values, we are very concerned looking at like a two or a 3% increase over the next. As opposed to, I think the example that you mentioned, use the 17% increase.
All we did is put out there and you're right, Paul, in regards to fictitious, it's not to make a judgment either way on Governor Evers' budget. It's just we had questions from the community. Well, Evers put this budget out. What does that look like? Can you change the amount on the referendum? We can't go back and change what the question dollar amount is, but the board does not have to levy to the amount that's approved by the community. All the revenue limit increase does is it authorizes the board to go up to that dollar amount. But the board can underleaving, the board committed to levying just to that amount that they need to operate. So there's no desire. And currently, right now, we're in a fiscal position where we don't have to short-term borrow, where we don't have to take out those loans. There's no need to increase the, the fund balance by $13 million. That would be, there's, there's no need to do that. So I don't foresee the school board voting to, to put, you know, approve a budget that it do that.
So the second, the second chart that we're looking at right now with the governor's. Now, I understand that, you know, hey, we're, we're talking theoretically a pipe dream here.
Right.
But theoretically, if that was to pass as written currently, that just simply changes the amount from the original chart that you were looking at. That's what I'm looking at.
Correct. This just says if Evers' budget were to pass as proposed, this is what our projected budget deficit would be.
What we had discussed, and Paul, you were a big part of that, was when we were going back and forth between the reoccurring and the non-reoccurring was that we don't know what Evers is going to project. I mean, we had no clue back then and then what's going to be passed with the budget. But that we need to show good faith to the community that we're only going to use what is absolutely necessary. And that's why we didn't do the reoccurring. We said non-reoccurring five years up to this amount, knowing that this would be worst case scenario.
Right. As I said, as I, I just analyzed more though, when the numbers didn't match up to what we had done in our financial analysis, I, I got more confused and am more confused. So when the voters vote, if it passes and we don't have to use all that money, does that, how, how does that impact the increase on individual tax liabilities? Or does it just benchmark it at 6 million? I guess that's, that's the question. Does it benchmark it at 6 million and everybody's increase is there and then they'll figure it out? Or does the county somehow re-evaluate and say, okay, yours is only going up $137 per 100,000?
We set the, the local levy each year after we receive the notice of, you know, what we receive from the state. The board votes in the fall and sets that levy. And so if the dollar amount is less than 6 million, that would obviously lower that potential tax impact on, on the individuals. There are other factors, you're right, on home evaluation, how that goes. And, and we all see that from year to year. If one community reassesses their home values and they go up and another community doesn't. But overall, that levy amount would be less, therefore that overall tax impact would be less.
Yeah, I guess as I'm looking at it, it's just not, it's not a withdrawal and a deposit at the vote. It gets reevaluated. And then if the district says we only need 3.8 million, then that number for every household is recalculated?
Well, the levy would be less, therefore it wouldn't be as large of a projected impact.
But, but I mean, they reevaluated at that time. So in the fall, the school district is going to say, this is the money we need. It's less than the $6 million we had, had voted for. And then they'll reevaluate and say, it's this much per 100,000. And then you'll get a bill. You'll have a deficit in your banking account at that point. Or do they, they just bankroll it at the 6 million and then work from there? And then we dip into what we need.
Well, we, that, the board, yeah, that would only be if the board levied the full 6 million, which the community is not, it was to levy only what was needed. Some boards will do a non-recurring referendum and they'll state that part of it is to do operation costs and to increase our fund balance. This board just has to continue operational costs.
So if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, and I apologize if I use an analogy that's going to make people nervous. So, so if you, say, for example, I'm needing, I'm needing a new vehicle. A loan, the, the, the bank approves me for $25,000. I don't need to go and spend that full $25,000. I can spend $20,000 instead, only take out a loan for $20,000. And instead of paying $250 per month, I'm now paying $200 per month. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
And then we just recalculate every single year. But in the fall, when we come back, we then decide, hey, now we need, instead of $6 million, we only need a million and a half this year. It's just basically like, again, I apologize for this, this, this comparison. It's basically like a line of credit almost. Not exactly. I mean, I know that's not what it is.
It's called a revenue limit.
Okay.
Revenue limit.
It's a great analogy.
And you don't have to go up to that. That, that projection that we shared is if you were to go up to that whole limit.
What's the current limit? What's current do we have? Does anybody know?
It's based on a per pupil and your membership number.
Yeah, it's like, it's like $39 million if we are revenue cap today. Okay. The per pupil amount in our enrollment or if we are average. I know it changes.
I wish, I wish you could.
And then we received, yeah, and about a third of that, 39 million, is made up from the local tax levy. The remainder is made up through state days and.
Yes.
The state.
Right. Okay. Because last year's tax levy for, for all the operations was about 20 million.
Okay. Okay, gotcha. That is, that does help.
Any other questions or discussions related to that chart? So I mean, I hate to even introduce more data cases, but that was a legitimate question that people asked. And at a point of confusion with the Governor Evers' budget, how does that, does that change our questions? It doesn't change our questions. If the dollar amount comes in higher than what the state gives and what we're projecting, then of course that would lower what we would need in the local.
Not because we don't want to change the question. We can't change the question.
We can't change it.
So just to communicate to the public, it's not that we're like being greedy here and saying, well, we really want to take it all. I mean, we can't change it. We projected worst case scenario and was honest about worst case scenario to the public. And, and Paul, we had lots of discussions about, we have to prove ourselves over the next five years. And you know that because it's a non-reoccurring. So I mean, that gives future boards are going to figure that one out. But we're going to be very honest about what we need.
So in regards to the, again, this is, we're talking pipe dreams here. It's something we have. And then in regards to Governor Evers' budget, we have the, the money that's, that they're currently debating right now over in Madison is a one-time, they, they don't have that money constantly coming in. So you, you know what, Jason, I'm not, I'm not going to go down that rabbit hole. So.
That's right. That, they, they have mentioned that that is a concern that the legislators are discussing. What are one-time, one-time revenues that we have? How do those get expended? And because they're not going to want to commit more money to the revenue limit unless they know that they have future revenues coming in.
Okay.
And so they'll be cautious is what they put to the revenue limit. They'll probably throw out grants like Evers put in, $300,000 a district our size for school mental health.
Yeah.
And what we'll have to look at is, okay, how long does that last?
Right.
You know, does it allow you to offset resources you already have? Does it allow you to add? If so, is that funding going to continue or not? So yeah, that, it can get, there's a lot of minutia there. But that's what they're going to have to debate is what are we able to fund ongoing? And what are we going to fund through one-time grants?
So theoretically in five, well, it's a five-year budget. Theoretically in a five-year, five years from now, if that, that money is all gone, or if we just reassess at that point and re-apply.
Yes.
Correct.
And one of the, the details even in the governor's budget is there's certain state budget language where they talk about some certain or some sufficient. And that has a very different meaning. Like for special education, it's usually defined as the some certain, which is an allocation for special education. And then if costs go up, percentage reimbursement keeps going down. He's included his budget that it would be some sufficient, which means they would guarantee the funding level to maintain 60%. That's a very different way of looking at it.
Yeah, okay.
So is there any chance that the legislature's not going to do an increase at all?
I think it's a chance. I, I don't.
Are we looking at a worse scenario? I mean, could we even breathe it for another year? Yeah. I, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
The number, the number that we have, not, not over Evers' budget, but the original budget. That one's if we get nothing at all. That's no change at all from state, correct?
No, that's including 200. This, this was assuming that we get 200 per pupil.
Gotcha.
I'm just saying that, that this would be a number.
And in my.
Like we did not get any increase.
In my discussions with the legislature, Julia, there are some legislatures within, you know, the caucus. And I had a conversation with Representative August. And there are some, and Representative August is not one who runs on a platform that he doesn't believe in increasing revenue limits.
Right.
Because there are some politicians that, Phil, if you need any increased spending for schools, go to referendum, have the community vote, let them increase it. Because I, as a politician, I have a platform, I have an increased taxes and a revenue limit is an increase. is an increase. Our, you know, Representative August, in the conversation I had with him, does not philosophically believe that. Now, I asked him, you know, and he knows that with the budget surplus somewhere, it's that I feel very safe that $200 per pupil would get approached through that. But he did share, there are some members in the caucus, in that caucus, that firmly will always be a zero. On the revenue limit increase, because they philosophically believe communities should have to pass five vote to increase school funding. And it's a new paradigm for those individuals, but I don't believe the full caucus will. I tried to give him down on a dollar, not give him one. He chuckled that when I asked, you know, if he gives me 600 to make up for the last two years, 200 or 200. He said, yeah, probably no way that's going to happen. And that's probably, on average, closer than line with what Evers does. So I think the 200 projection is, I think it'll come out a little better than 200, but hypothetically, but it, yeah. But that would be a tough sell politically for them as well to start schools.
We're just going to act like the pre-COVID numbers. Right, I mean, see, correct.
Hey, one of the questions I was trying to think through is just the timing of this process. Because in the perfect world, it's kind of the June, July, state starts the school year, we have a budget, we know where we're going. But some occasions, we're sitting here in September and October, still waiting to see what the state budget is. And that's a possibility, too.
Yeah. I hope both sides get together and work on it so that we know a reasonable timeframe on that. Any other questions? All right, so this is a very good discussion. Thank you, Paul, for bringing up those.
Yeah. Like I said, I just, I started doing analytical processing, and when numbers weren't matching up, I got more confused. I shouldn't be in that advanced math class. I know, I know what I want to see, and I can't find it on any of the pages.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Yep.
All right, we have, see, I don't want to steal Mary's thunder. She, I don't know if she knows it or not, but these went through the policy committee, a lot of work from our school nurse on updating our policies, striking old language, and then updating it to reflect either current practice or current recommendations in there. So I'll go through these fairly quick. You definitely have time. If there's any questions, stop me. But this is basically striking all of this old language, which you'll see where like mandatory, there's only a requirement within the 4K centers, which is a part of that 4K center requirement, then everything else is going to a recommendation in that, with the exception of those who participate in the middle and high school athletics. Then we have the update to the vision hearing and scoliosis and academic screening process. Let's see, the striking of the language of the first part, updating the ages in which the hearing screenings are conducted, based on the recommendations by the American Academy of Pediatrics. And parents have the option to opt out if they don't want their kids to be screened. I'll say, I don't know, I felt guilty as a parent, but all three of my older kids were before, all caught on their vision through the school screenings, so they.
Mine was a hearing. We had three surgeries because of it, so thank you.
And I had one with hearing.
Thank you for hearing.
But it's up to the parents. If they don't want their kids to do the screening, they can have them out. Any questions on those? Oh, and scoliosis has not been, that really hasn't been a part of the school screening since, really, 2001. Section 504 policy, going from a short, sustained policy, but based on legal recommendations. I think in the history of all school board policies, there's never been such an expansion. But this was a policy that Emily Lynn and her team worked very hard on, went through with real counsel, looking at other model policies as well, to make sure that we capture all the legal requirements related to 504. So I would just open that up to, are there specific questions related to it? Otherwise, this is the first reading. We can review it and ask more questions in between now and the next meeting and bring those answers back for the next one. No questions, and move on. And then this is a proposal to delete the old 504, the updated procedures. That's all I have for the first reading.
We'll see it again next meeting. Their condition is that it's a mixture.
All right. Always torn when I share these, because I'm very happy for the individuals that they reached this point in their career. But this year, we have a number of retirees that are.
My husband's classmates.
Have reached that point, your husband's classmates. So we have Cheryl Neifelt, Natalie Marcel, Ted Neifelt, Paul Schneider, and Bridget Truitt, who have all submitted their letters of retirement for the end of this year. Their positions are listed on there. And we'll be doing a retiring celebration at the end of the year, but you'll see their years of experience, 31, 32, 24, 16, and 25 years at the school leadership perspective amongst those individuals. And we have the transfer of Brenda Lickner to serve as a special teaching assistant and options and appointment of Melissa Coecrop as a Westside Special Education Teaching Assistant.
Any questions for Mr. Gabbard?
Can we, I don't think we're about to.
Tried that as well.
Didn't work.
Yeah, I do think it is impart reflective, too. We're reaching that point where we're running into the teachers who have the 403D post-employment benefit rather than that insurance credit, which used to kind of be, there was that division when Act 10 came in, that they had to have 15 years of experience in the district at the time correct bill. And then if they worked until 58, they received a $40,000 insurance credit. And then 60 and 62, I think, were the, because that's for our time intervals. So now we're running into.
55.
Yep, 55, 56, yeah, when they're becoming retirement eligible and, yeah, saving advantage.
Any questions?
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for recovery 27, 2023, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated truck screening as presented.
Is there a second? So moving to second to approve the personal recommendation sheet February 27, 2022, including 2023, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. It's like we don't have a gift this evening, so.
On Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend the FFA alumni banquet, which I wanted to share with the board, that they had awarded a recognized bar, Fisher, as a friend of the alumni. And that was an event that you would go to on a, they tend on annual basis, and Bar was always there every year, and a big supporter of the FFA alumni. So that was a great honor that they shared with her. They also announced that their chapter was named the Wisconsin Chapter of the Year, and will be advanced on to the national level for recognition. And Derek Pappke was recognized as the FFA Young Alumni Member of the Year in Wisconsin, which was a great honor. They do, they've been doing tremendous work in what they provide for support for our students and the access and opportunities that they create, and the amount of money that they generate from, they work hard in working the, at the fair, the fundraisers, they have a lot of different ones to fund and subsidize these opportunities for the students so they can all afford to go and do these great things. So I want to give a big shout out thanks to them. And then as board members, you may have received in your emails an invite from the National Art Society for Thursday, March 6th, after March 6th, 7:00 at 6:50. I just, we would just need to know since the entire board was invited, if you plan to attend, so we can post it if you need it. Yeah, March 9th. I want to, I just say.
Six, six. There's a lot of boxes in that.
All right. Yeah, March 9th, I apologize. So, and you don't have to let me know this evening, but if you let yourself a day know, then we'll just post it. And that's all that I have for the announcements. Just a reminder again in the board notes, I've reviewed board policy and sent it to me, and I've put some notes in there. That's it.
Can I get motion to adjourn now?
So might.
Second, second adjourn.
All right. Do you need those first? Is that, is that the second? All right. Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?